All right, for the last time, at 5 o'clock, I will gavel in the City Council Special Call Meeting Agenda Canvas of the Election on May 14th at 2024. If you will stand with me, we will have a prayer and Pledge of Allegiance. Lord, we come to you tonight with lots and lots of Thanksgivings. I thank you for this city, for the natural beauty, the river, our wonderful river trail, the quality of life that we enjoy. I thank you for the people who have called this town home forever and ever, and I thank you for those from many other places who have been called here because of what life offers. I thank you, Lord, for the awesome, awesome city staff and 300 city employees. They are the best of the best, and they are so appreciated, every, every one of them. And I ask, as always, Lord, that you bless and keep safe our fire, our police, our EMS personnel. They protect us every day of the year, and we so thank them for that. And then, Lord, I thank you for the three new council members who will take their place at the dais tonight. I ask that you give to all the council members who will serve us this next year wisdom, strength, patience, guidance. They make decisions for our city that will affect us for years to come, and they just need your guidance. And last, Lord, I just ask that as we live, work, play, and enjoy life together, that it is a city, that we think of others and not just ourselves. We change the big "I" to a big "we," and together we work toward what's good, what's best for Kerrville. And then, Lord, with your help, we work to live that out every day. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have two consent agenda items. Do we have a motion to accept them?
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, right hand, and it is approved unanimously. We have two resolutions before us, council. Resolution number 09-2024 canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the May 4, 2024 City General Election. Do we have a motion?
I move. We adopt resolution number 09-2024.
Second. All in favor, right hand, and it passes unanimously. Resolution number 14-2024, I'll make a motion for that. Do we have a second?
Second.
We are canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the May 4, 2024 City Special Election regarding amendments to the city charter. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it passes.
At Meta Mayor, we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
We do. All right. Let's do that right now.
Nikki Caines.
And Nikki, two minutes, please.
Oh, I won't even take that long. Nikki Caines, I live in the city. My only concern was that with the error that was made in the publication that was required by law, that with the error and the Facebook posting and the timing of that posting, is there anything in the law to make an exception that the posting of the error still fits within the timeframe of the publishing of that error before totally accepting everything?
Mr. Hayes, do you have a response to that?
I've addressed this before. It was a mistake. We corrected the mistake, and I'm comfortable moving forward.
Okay. I am also. Thank you.
That is the end of the citizen speakers.
All right. Thank you. All right. I'm not sure who I turn number three over to.
Commendations to and statements by outgoing council members.
Did I start?
I think, Mary, I think you should start.
I will gladly start. I really don't have much to say. It has been a lot of fun. I thank everyone in this room for your support, for your faith and your trust in me, in this I thank a staff that is unlike any other. They are the best of the best. They have been absolutely wonderful. They take care of us. They make us look good, and I just, I can't say anything greater than they are the best of the best. And that includes the 300 employees that we have in our city. Everybody has been awesome. There have been ups and downs. There's been some, lots of good. There's been some bad. There's been some ugly, but that's, that's part of, of what we do. We can't make everyone happy as we, from this point of view. We can do the best we can, but we will never, ever make everybody happy. What it takes is citizens who are willing to accept those decisions and say, okay, we'll, we'll live with those. And you guys, you, you do that for us, and we thank you for that. I've been through three city managers. I'm not sure that that was my fault. I don't think it was. I like to not think it was, but three city managers who have done a super, super job for our city. Mark brought in, Andy A. brought in the 2050 Plan, and that is going to serve this community for years. That is absolutely one of the very, very best things that we could do. And I just, I have to brag about a couple other people. There were two other people in this room who voted for that with me, Delane Segerman and Bill, I believe you came in. You're, you're somewhere.
I don't know.
There he is. So I'm proud of what we did, and it will serve this community for a long, long time. And then, we had Mr. Rice came in, and Dalton is unlike our others, which is good. We don't need people that are all alike. And Dalton is bringing a, a new perspective to Kerrville, but it's going to be good. The other thing that I am so pleased with is our new council. I can sleep at night with our new council in place, so I thank you for that. So other than that, just accept my heartfelt thanks for all of your support, all of your encouragement, all of your hugs. Speaking of hugs, I need to thank the chief. He walked me to the car and gave me a hug every night after this. I think I turn it over to Mr. Garcia.
Okay. Thank you all for being here. This evening is somewhat of a bittersweet moment for me as my term on council comes to an end. Since I ran for mayor, according to our city charter, I automatically resign my current position as of tomorrow. But just so everyone's aware, because of a provision of our state constitution, I'm not quite off the hook yet. There is a provision in there that provides that council members continue to serve until their successors are duly qualified. And one thing, if you know me very well, is that anything I do, I put my whole heart into it, and I'm 100% dedicated to it, and I see it to completion. So I will continue to serve diligently until the last day of my term, when my successor is appointed and sworn in. It's kind of, kind of going to be like that guest that's in your house who says goodbye but still lingers in the living room for a while. That's going to be me for the next few days. Running for mayor and even council has been quite the journey, and I've learned more every single time, and I think it's only continued to deepen the connection and the love that I have here for our home and in our community. And to those who supported me in every election and this one for the fourth time, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. I could not have accomplished this if you had not given me the opportunity to. And your kind words, your phone calls, your texts, letters, your prayers, they really kept me going. To my biggest supporters in life, to my parents and to my siblings, I love you all very much and am forever blessed by everything that you have given to allow me to accomplish some of my craziest dreams at my age. And to those who may not have been in my corner, it's okay, because it only pushed me to really just work harder. And at the end of the day, I know that I did everything that I could to represent the 25,000 members of our community, or as I like to say, my 25,000 bosses throughout the city. And I am forever proud of the work that we have accomplished together and the many positive impacts that we have made on our community forever to come. Congratulations to Mayor-elect Herring, Councilmember McKenney,-elect McKenney, and Councilmember Hughes on being elected to your respective offices. Council, as I sit back, I would urge you to think about the legacy and the home that we leave behind. And remember that the actions that we take, the ordinances, the policies that we pass have a everlasting ripple effect into the future. So let's aim to be the kind of leaders who are going to plant a tree. We may not get to sit under that shade, but we know that it will provide comfort and life to others that will follow. So in the spirit of leaving behind a sustainable Kerrville, which has been my goal from the very beginning, I implore you to consider not just the immediate impacts of our decisions, but also their long-term effects on our current generation, my generation, our children, and our grandchildren. Remember who's going to be the one to... Well, and let's just make sure that my generation and future generations don't have to sit up here at a council meeting with the burden that we've left behind and discuss what could have been done better today. Instead, let's let them reap the benefits and be grateful for the foresight and the initiatives that this council has taken to leave them a wonderful place that they can also be proud to call home. And to the person who will sit in this seat next, you can rest assured that you will always have a fresh smelling breath, because with Councilmember Harris next to you, he always has a stack of mints here. So rest assured at every single meeting. In conclusion, while our campaign for mayor did not end up with a victory this year, I consider my time serving all of you on council more than a win for me. It's been a privilege and an honor to serve with current and former council members, current and former staff. It has really been a privilege and an honor to do all this. And I am blessed that I'm still young enough to say that this truly is just the beginning of my life's journey. God has quickly been highlighting so many more opportunities that I can continue to be of service to our community, whether it's locally or at the state or federal level. So many things have been opening up, and I am going to be trusting in God's path that he has for me and continue to pursue the passion and what I believe is the plan that he has set for my life. So what that will be is still yet to be determined, but I am really excited for what's next. So stay tuned, because there's a lot more to come. So council, staff, neighbors, it has been wonderful working with each of you, and I wish everyone the best in whatever is next in life for all of us. So may God bless you all, and thank you.
Ready for the judge?
So do you want to do commendation first or first of all?
Oh, commendation. I forgot.
No, perfect. So very humbly in the evening, I actually was just told about 20 minutes ago that I would be doing this, so like, like in good fashion, we'll, we'll make it work and we'll wing it. Very humbly night for everybody. Appreciate all the turnout. I think it speaks volumes, you know, the, the community support and the community engagement, you know, here in Kerrville. I've only been here a short seven and a half months, and so I really should not be the one doing this, but, but I'm honored to do it, especially for, you know, one, a great election, you know, a lot of challenging things, but I, I've seen much worse, and I think there was a lot of benefit, and I think the community spoke a lot of volumes, you know, coming out. And so, very humbling, we have two outgoing people. We have Councilmember Garcia outgoing, and we have Madam Mayor, who is going to be outgoing as well. So I'm going to go for Councilmember Garcia. And there is a Kerrville Resolution of Commendation, whereas Roman Garcia has served as council member, place one for the city of Kerrville since May 2021, and has shown concern for the citizens of Kerrville, whereas Roman Garcia demonstrated an interest in community servitude during his term in office, whereas we as members of city council wish to express our appreciation to Mr. Roman Garcia for his contributions during his tenure of office from May 21 through May 24. Now therefore, be resolved by the City Council of the city of Kerrville, Texas, on behalf of the citizens of Kerrville as well, well as ourselves individually, we wish to express our sincere gratitude for the invaluable services rendered by Roman Garcia and for serving honestly, fairly, efficiently, and always keeping the best interests of the community in the forefront. So I want to issue this, give you that. Do pictures down here?
Sure, let's do that.
That was unexpected.
I'll let you have that one. Watch out, it likes to slide out of the folder there. So. Oh, my bad. Awesome. Thank you. All right, Madam Mayor, now for the main event. Do you want to come on down here? Go ahead, just put you on the spot for this one.
I could just go home.
Yeah, like, I could just, I could just not be this. All right. So again, there is a city of Kerrville Resolution for Commendation, whereas Mayor Judy Eichner has served in the city Kerrville, city Kerrville City Council from May 2018 through May 2024, as mayor, May 2022 through May 2024, as council member, place three, May 2018 through May of 2022, and mayor pro temp from May 2019 through November 20, 2020. Whereas Judy Eichner has shown sincere concern for the welfare of the citizens of Kerrville, whereas Judy Eichner continuously demonstrated an interest in growth and development of the city of Kerrville during her term in office, whereas Judy Eichner represented the city of Kerrville on the Kerrville Kerr County Airport Planning Board, Alamo Area Council of Governments, Kerrville Economic Development Corporation, and the Kerrville Public Utility Board. Now therefore, it be resolved by the City Council of the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, that on behalf of the citizens of Kerrville, as well as ourselves individually, we wish to express our sincere gratitude for the invaluable services rendered by Mayor Judy Eichner and for the serving honestly, fairly, and efficiently, and always keeping the best interests of the community in the forefront at all times. So I'll have this, and you're not free yet. We got a couple more things for you. I'll move. And then we'll just stand here. I'll go. So stand right here, Madam Mayor. So also, and really, real quick, what I want to also highlight too, and there's going to be some historians in here that hopefully will correct me. I believe there's the 36 mayors or more? 60 mayors? All right, so the sheet she had had 36, so 60 mayors, and you are the third female mayor. So at least I had that number right.
And we started in 1889.
And I did know it started in 1889. So while she may be off city council on the mayor, she will never get rid of the gavel. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And this, just recently, we started doing...
Dalton, the mayors is 36 from 1958, whenever we were being the city.
Gotcha. So just recently, we had our, our leadership pre-strategic planning meeting, and some of the survey results that we kind of got back just from city staff was employee appreciation, employee recognition. And mayor and city council has always been a big proponent of employee engagement and, you know, talking very highly of the staff. And so what we kicked off was kind of a new employee appreciation program on how we, we kind of want to recognize this. And so really, we wanted to kind of do a very first time where we basically started doing poker chips. And so each department kind of did their own poker chips. And the goal of it is, is as city council members, leadership, you know, see employees of the city, the Kerrville team, they can give out, you know, appreciation and just little tokens of things to do it. And so this is the very first one that shows all the departments and the poker chips.
That's neat. Thank you, thank you.
I also have something for our mayor, if I may. Delane, can you help? You know, you have to get a friend box. This, Madam Mayor, is a reminder to wag more and bark less. Some sweet things inside here for you, including cards from staff and some special little things for me. And I also have a dear friend who asked me to pass this on to you. It's a gorgeous charcuterie board for you. So since you're going to have all this time on your hands, you can have to use it. So thank you for all your time.
Madam Mayor, we do have nine citizen speakers signed up?
Okay. You have family?
Oh, no, 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 I don't.
Okay.
No, no, no. Those are George and, and other people, yeah.
Come on, George.
He is just there, and I thank him. All right, we have citizen speakers. All right. Probably, we probably should limit the time a little bit here, right?
Okay.
Okay. Three minutes?
Okay.
Okay. Two minutes? Council, what do we need to do?
Two.
Okay, yeah.
William Rector?
Two minutes. If you will, please.
Charles got three pages. We begin our council meeting each time with a prayer. Our common prayer does not advocate destruction of our enemies, nor those that we disagree with, but we ask for understanding, for knowledge, and for wisdom for each of our council members. Those prayers have been heard and answered as our mayor, Judy Eichner, led our community through joyous but also difficult times. She remained calm, wise, considerate, but firm when needed. We have been truly blessed by her leadership, by her knowledge, and by her wisdom. Mayor Eichner, I thank you, and our community thanks you for your six years of service. Mayor Herring and our council, please know that you will also be in our prayers and know that we appreciate the time that you will be freely giving to our community. We ask for your strength, for your knowledge, and your wisdom. Thank each of you for your service.
Glenn Andrews?
Sorry, sorry, Glenn. Two minutes.
Thanks, Glenn. I was going to say some really nice things about you. Well, it was actually apropos, what you did just a second ago, because tonight, as all of you know, no matter, there may be sitting up here, but there's another person involved in the life that gives up a lot while they're serving. So tonight, I'm going to talk about Judy and George. Was a plan. Mayor and First Dude, a month ago, I highlighted the many achievements of our community which have been accomplished during Judy's eight, six years of serving the city council and as mayor. It is an impressive list. Tonight, I want to highlight the lives of, excuse me, two phenomenal individuals, Mayor Judy and First Dude George. You two are faith in action. You two have servant hearts. Your lives here live are giving, serving, and offering grace. Whether it was serving in our nation as a career military family, leading Mount Wesley, serving in First United Methodist Church, the city gathering Christmas decorations for our city, playing at our symphony, helping, being active in Rotary, serving on the city council, serving as mayor and first dude, greeting and ushering at First United Methodist Church, handing out food at the light on the hill, serving the boards of Habitat for Humanity, HCYO, Doyle Community, and many more, the resident trumpet player par excellence, and the highly respected real estate agent. You did all this and much more. Mayor and First Dude, you're the type of persons that I point to and say to my granddaughter, they're the faith in action. They walk the walk, they talk the talk. Can I have 30 seconds, Mayor? And I say that about you, and I say that to myself. Watch those two, they're role models. You know how Christ taught us to walk the way. So simply, we say, thanks, thanks, and thanks to them. The community respects and loves you two. Well, I simply say, you're the, if not one of the, first families of Kerrville. Thank you.
Michael Segerman?
Kind of hard to follow that, but I just wanted to say a couple of things about mayor...
Mayor Herring and our council, please know that you will also be in our prayers and know that we appreciate the time that you will be freely giving to our community. We ask for your strength, for your knowledge, and your wisdom. Thank each of you for your service.
Sorry, sorry Glenn, two minutes.
I was going to say some really nice things about you. Well, it was actually apropos what you did just a second ago. Because tonight, as all of you know, no matter, there may be sitting up here, but there's another person involved in the life that gives up a lot while they're serving. So tonight, I'm going to talk about Judy and George. Was a plan. Mayor and First Dude, a month ago, I highlighted the many achievements of our community which have been accomplished during Judy's eight, six years of serving the city council. And as mayor, it is an impressive list. Tonight, I want to highlight the lives of, excuse me, two phenomenal individuals, Mayor Judy and First Dude George. You two are faith in action. You two have servant hearts. Your lives here live are giving, serving, and offering grace. Whether it was serving in our nation as a career military family, leading Mount Wesley, serving in First United Methodist Church, the city gathering Christmas decorations for our city, playing at our symphony, helping, being active in Rotary, serving on the city council, serving as mayor and first dude, greeting and ushering at First United Methodist Church, handing out food at the light on the hill, serving the boards of Habitat for Humanity, A C Y O, Doyle Community, and many more, the resident trumpet player par excellence, and the highly respected real estate agent. You did all this and much more. Mayor and First Dude, you're the type of persons that I point to and say to my granddaughter, "There's faith in action." They walk the walk, they talk the talk. Can I have thirty seconds, Mayor? And I say that about you, and I say that to myself. Watch those two, they're role models. You know how Christ taught us to walk the way. So simply, we say, "Thanks, thanks, and thanks to them." The community respects and loves you two. Well, I simply say, you're the, if not one of the, first families of Curville. Thank you.
Michael Singer.
Kind of hard to follow that, but I just wanted to say a couple of things about Mayor Judy Eichner. I've watched her for six years serve on city council. I've watched her endure so many things up there on city council as mayor. I've watched her endure threats. I've watched her endure accusations. I've watched her endure criticism. I've watched her serve with honesty, dignity, and integrity. And it's just made me so proud to be in this city and have a mayor such as Ms. Judy Eichner. She's done such a wonderful job for this city. She has served with grace. She's handled everything that's been thrown at her like a Christian. And she has always governed and made decisions about one thing. And she has always said this from day one on city council to day, the last day here. Everything that she does, every decision that she makes, has been what she thinks is best for the city of Curville. No agendas, just what she thinks is best for the city of Curville. You will be missed, you are honored, and we appreciate so much what you have done for this city. Thank you, Mayor Eichner.
Why don't you just stay up there, Judy?
Kim Clarkson. I took, I took a paragraph out, so I hope I can get through it. Mayor Eichner, today I am here to thank you for your exceptional service as a devoted member of the Curville City Council over the last six years. Throughout your time in office, you have demonstrated unwavering dedication and commitment to serving the citizens of Curville. Your leadership and tireless efforts have made our community better and will continue to have a positive and lasting impact for years to come. From my perspective, one of your most admirable qualities has been consistently making decisions that prioritize the best interests of the citizens of Curville. Even in the face of challenging situations, you have remained... You're making me teary. You've remained composed, patient, and kind. While you often faced those who were critical of you, you were always true to your one agenda, and you always said, "I have only one agenda," as Mike said, "to do what is best for Curville." Thank you, Mayor, for your selfless service and prudent leadership. May your life continue to inspire us to build a stronger, more united Curville for generations to come. I think we can all benefit from following your advice into wag more and bark less. Your legacy will be, forever be etched into our hearts as a small token of appreciation. Many of your friends, many who are here today and many who are not, and your supporters have donated funds so that we can add a park bench in your honor along the River Trail. And the inscription will read, "Judy Eichner, City Council Place Three, 2018 through 2022, Mayor Twenty-two through Twenty-four, and her motto, Wag More, Bark Less." It will be placed next to our former mayor, Bill Blackburn's bench as well. So, thank you, thank you.
Mary Campana.
I have to lower that for Kim. Mayor Judy, you've been here from day one, even in the interview when I first started Habitat for Humanity. Your visionary leadership has transformed our city and it's a better, making a better place for all that call it home. It's just, not just because of your accomplishments that stand out, it's your ability to rise above challenges with grace and determination. You have gone above and beyond, leading us through tough times with resilience and a steadfast commitment to community collaboration, always focused on the future. Your remarkable expertise and unwavering dedication has left an indelible mark on Curville. Through these tireless efforts, you brought people together, fostering a spirit of unity and progress. Your legacy of service will continue to inspire us for years to come. Thank you, Mayor Judy, for your extraordinary leadership and profound impact that you've had on our beloved Curville community. So I just want to say thank you very much, and thank you for everything you've done for the Habitat homeowners.
Phyllis Hammond.
So, Mayor Judy, you have heard from everyone just what an excellent leader you have been. And I want to just add to that, that you have always led from a place of honesty and integrity and confidence. And you are such a wonderful example for all leaders, but particularly for female leaders, to know that you can lead from those places, also demonstrating Curville kindness. That you show that through your eyes, through your smile. And I appreciate it. As someone who is, who likes to be involved in some things, and so you have shown that you can be a good leader when you lead from both your head and your heart. And I appreciate that very much of you.
I do have just a little thing to say. Oh, am I already out of time? I wanted to talk to Councilman Herring and Councilman Hughes. I wanted to say thank you so much for stepping up and being willing to serve again. I have always been impressed with both your honesty and your integrity, but what has impressed me the most is your thoughtfulness, the way that you really think with a big vision down the road about what is going to be the most helpful for Curville all the way through to that 2050, that both of you have at your heart what is best for Curville long-term. And I really appreciate that you are willing to get up once more and do this for Curville and make a difference for Curville. So, thank you so much for that, too.
Charlie McElvee.
Good afternoon. Mayor first met you or got to know you much better when you made the arrangements for Rhonda and I to purchase our home. And if not been for you, we wouldn't have the home we enjoy as much as we do. Number two, about six and a half years ago, I still remember sitting in the living room of that home when you and George came over for a visit and you said that you were thinking about running for city council. At that point, I knew that you'd be a great council member. I just didn't realize how great you really would be. And you've made many contributions as a council member and as a mayor that will, you've established a legacy that will live for many years to come. And during my fifty-plus years' career in the community service sector, I've worked for, worked for and with many, many mayors. And I'm sitting next to one of them this evening, so I'll say you were within the top two mayors throughout the years. I commend you for everything you've done. Thank you for your, your unselfish dedication to our community and wish you and our First Dude George many, many more years of enjoyable life here in Curville. And I know, I was just going to also say that you, you barked very little that I'm aware of, but wagged a lot.
Phil Blackburn.
I'm going to take this podium. Judy, you are a true friend and a valued friend. I have such great respect for you, your insight into people and issues, your fairness, your faith that is so evident in all of your leadership. I appreciate your background, going all the way back to when you were a twelve-year-old girl on that farm mower tractor, plowing the field of that Nebraska farm. And then on to college, you met, married George, the career in the Air Force. But look at what all of this prepared you for in terms of your leadership as mayor. A mother, grandmother, a teacher, and in real estate business, which is an amazing business to get to know the community and the people of the community. I will say this, and Judy's heard me say this before, sorry, Mayor, but your intelligence has, has really been seen in this time on council and particularly as mayor. Tough decisions, digging into the details, making good decisions. And you've heard this several times, but our previous city manager, Mark McDaniel, said to me several times when I was mayor and you were on council, he said, "I really like how Judy thinks." Now, it really kind of hurt my feelings because he never said that, he never said that about me. But, but you have done well. Your commitment to this city and your contributions are a great legacy. You have embodied Curville kindness. Thank you.
Peggy McKay.
Peggy McKay, 103 West Chester. I knew, Mayor, that you would have a lot of people coming to speak to you. And since I've known Roman for such a long time, I hope that you approve that I direct my comments to him after I thank you for your service. Roman, the one thing you've done for us was transparency. It's an overused word, but underused in practice in today's world. You were not selective in what you did. You went right by the book, right by the law. We appreciate that. Respect. You respected everybody, whether they were with you, they were against you. You gave them the respect. I've never saw you raise your temper. I appreciate that. And there were many times we were very proud of the way you conducted yourself on council. Such a young man with the age of the rest of us. You did your research, you did your dedication to your job. When you came to council, you were more than well repaired, or prepared, and we respected that. We knew that if you spoke, it was what you believed because of the research you had done. And I thank you for that. You came prepared, you were always knowledgeable, whatever the subject. I've watched you many years at these council meetings since you were a teenager. I was impressed with you when I first heard you. I'm just as impressed today. You didn't win the election for mayor. Mr. Herring will be our new mayor, but it was a win-win for you. You would win if you served the council in Curville, and you'll win in your career, your search for your law degree and public service. And we thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McCarrick.
Alright, good. It's time for the good stuff. Where's the judge? There he is.
So, we'll start with Joe Herring. If you'll please come forward. Yeah, if anybody wants to come up, any family wants to come up, feel free. Alright, so I have to administer two oaths. The first oath is a statement of officer, and the second oath will be the oath of office. So if you'll please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Joe Herring Jr.,
I, Joe Herring Jr.
Do solemnly swear,
Do solemnly swear.
That I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay,
That I have not
directly
Directly
or indirectly
Or indirectly
Paid, offered, promised to pay,
Promised to pay
Contributed or promised to contribute,
Contributed or promised to contribute
Any money or thing of value,
Any money or thing of value
Or promised any public office,
Or promised any public office
Or employment for the giving or withholding,
Or employment for the giving or withholding
Of a vote at the election at which I was elected,
Of a vote at the election at which I was elected
Or as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation,
Or as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation
Whichever the case may be.
Whichever the case may be
So help me God.
There's no way.
And this is the oath of office. Please repeat after me. I, Joe Herring Jr.,
I, Joe Herring Jr.
Do solemnly swear,
Do solemnly swear
That I will faithfully execute
That I will faithfully execute
The duties of the office,
The duties of the office
Of mayor of the city of Curville,
Of mayor of the city of Curville
Of the state of Texas,
Of the state of Texas
And will to the best of my ability,
And will to the best of my ability
Preserve, protect, and defend,
Preserve, protect, and defend
The Constitution and laws of the United States,
Constitution and laws of the United States
And of this state,
And of this state
So help me God.
So help me God.
Alright, next is Kent McKinney. Once again, the first oath is going to be a statement of officer for the position of council member Place Three of the city of Curville. Please raise your right hand, sir. I, Kent McKinney,
I, Kent McKinney
Do solemnly swear,
Do solemnly swear
That I have not directly or indirectly paid,
That I have not directly or indirectly paid
Offered,
Offered
Promised to pay,
Promised to pay
Contributed,
Contributed
Or promised to contribute,
Or promised to contribute
Any money or thing of value,
Any money or thing of value
Or promised any public office,
Or promised any public office
Or employment,
Or employment
For the giving or withholding,
For the giving or withholding
Of a vote,
Of a vote
At the election at which I was elected,
At the election at which I was elected
Or as a reward,
Or as a reward
To secure my appointment or confirmation,
To secure my appointment or confirmation
Whichever the case may be.
Whichever the case may be
So help me God.
So help me God.
That's the tough part. The next is the oath of office. If you'll please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Kent McKinney,
I, Kent McKinney
Do solemnly swear,
Do solemnly swear
That I will faithfully execute,
That I will faithfully execute
The duties of the office,
The duties of the office
Of council member Place Three of the city of Curville,
Of the office of Place Three of the city of Curville
Of the state of Texas,
Of the state of Texas
And will to the best of my ability,
And will to the best of my ability
Preserve, protect, and defend,
Preserve, will to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend
The Constitution and laws,
The Constitution and laws
Of the United States and of this state
Of the United States and this state
So help me God.
So help me God.
Alright, next is Brenda Hughes. Alright, the first oath is a statement of officer for council member Place Four of the city of Curville. Please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Brenda Hughes,
I, Brenda Hughes
Do solemnly swear,
Do solemnly swear
That I have not directly or indirectly paid,
That I have not directly or indirectly paid
Offered, promised to pay,
Offered, promised to pay
Contributed or promised to contribute Contributed or promised to contribute
Promised or contribu-- say that again.
Contributed or promised to contribute Any money or thing of value
Any money or thing of value
Or promised any public office
Or promised any public office
Or employment
Or employment
For the giving or withholding of a vote
For the giving or withholding of a vote
At the election at which I was elected
At the election at which I was elected
Or as a reward to secure my appointment
Or as a reward to secure my appointment
Or confirmation
Or confirmation
Whichever the case may be
Whichever the case may be
So help me God
So help me God.
All right. You didn't think you were going to get a quiz today. Okay, the next is the oath of office. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Brenda Hughes
I, Brenda Hughes
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
That I will faithfully
That I will faithfully
Execute the duties
Execute the duties
Of the office of
Of the office of
Council member Place 4 of the city of Kerrville
Council member Place 4 of the city of Kerrville
Of the state of Texas
Of the state of Texas
And will to the best of my ability
And will to the best of my ability
Preserve, protect, and defend
Preserve, protect, and defend
The Constitution and laws of the United States
The Constitution and laws of the United States
And of this state
And of this state
So help me God
So help me God.
Congratulations.
if it's okay, I'll start off. I want to say thank you. Thank you to my wife, Carolyn, who was not in favor of this, but said she would support me. Thank you to my son, Joe, who's covered a lot of the work I do at the shop, our daughter, Elizabeth, who designed my signs, my business partner and sister, Judy, who's taken up a lot of slack while I've been gone, my mom, Pat, who's believed in me much longer than I've believed in myself. I want to thank you, thank everyone who put up a sign, knocked on a door, made a telephone call. It was a team effort, and I really appreciate everyone who came out in support of me and my friends, Kent and Brenda. I want to say a big thank you to Mayor Judy Eichner, not only for believing in me, but for being an example on how to be a good mayor. Mayor Eichner will be a very tough act to follow, and so I'll just do my best. I want to say thank you to my friends Brenda Hughes and Kent McKinney. We had a good campaign, and it was fun getting to know them. I want to thank my worthy opponent, Roman Garcia. He made me campaign even harder, so thank you. I want to thank our wonderful city staff for all you do for our community. It's seldom acknowledged that you helped make Kerrville a better place to live. And lastly, we as a council have a lot to do, but let's get to work. Thank you.
Well, I too would like to thank my wife, Janet, who gave me a lot of encouragement and support during all this process, and I would like to thank Judy Eichner, who didn't give up on me when I said no two or three times. And she made a good case, and I'm very excited to be here and to be involved and to follow her lead and many things that she started, and also to be able to work with the other council members who I think have done a good job following the 2050 plan, which I think is something that we all should value, and it will need some changes here and there, but the 2050 plan is a great roadmap for where we can go and how we can get there, and it's just a real honor for me to have the support across the community, and as Joe said, there was a huge team effort in the campaign, and it was no small effort, and we took the job very seriously, and we appreciate all those different teams, really, that created part into that one big team, and many of the ones that gave the most of their effort and their money are here tonight, and we really appreciate your efforts. So I look forward to continuing the good work that really the city council's done for quite a long time, and we have a great community because of that, and we just want to continue to build upon that, so I look forward to doing my part in that. Thank you.
I am incredibly honored to have been re-elected for a third term. As your Place 4 city council member, I'm grateful to my family, my campaign team, and the many friends and voters who, again, place their trust in me to serve as their representative. Above all, I thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for guiding me to be precisely where He wants me to be. As your council member, my top priority will always be the safety of our community. I am excited to work alongside our new mayor, my fellow council members, and our exceptional staff to move Kerrville forward thoughtfully and responsibly. Together, we will continue to prioritize the needs of our entire community and work towards making Kerrville an even better place to live, work, and play. I am committing to meeting the goals outlined in the Kerrville 2050 Comprehensive Plan, which provides a clear roadmap for our city. This plan will continue to be my guide in the decisions that I make as we work towards a more prosperous and sustainable future for Kerrville. I want to take this opportunity to thank our outgoing Mayor Judy for her invaluable contributions to the city over the past six years. It has been an absolute pleasure working alongside her for four of those years and learning from her wisdom and experience. I've learned to wag more and bark less, but more importantly, I've learned to stay within the boundaries of my fence. Judy, although you are leaving the dais tonight, I will continue to benefit from your guidance and your leadership. Now that your schedule is open, I hope you'll consider volunteering for Kerrville Pets Alive. And with that, we are adjourned.